Welcome, everybody, to the September 19th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and any other electronic communication device. The agendas are located at the back of the chambers, and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers also. If you want to speak on any item, you can turn them into Holly Hennings here at the side of the dais, please. At this time, the Commission -- I just went over that. What called me into order, I'll start it off with a moment of silence, of reflection, and pledge of allegiance held by Travis Lastr.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lastr. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Lastr. Any public comment, any further from the Commission? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to item number five, Executive Proclamation for National Custodian Appreciation Day. I'll ask Dave if he could please come to the podium, and I'll ask Mr. Lastr to read the proclamation and present it to him.
You will read it from here and then go down there and present?
Yeah.
Okay. Executive proclamation, Pennington County. Whereas custodians are our first line of defense in the war on germs, and often, it's a thankless job. Custodians work behind the scenes and sometimes while we sleep. Sometimes we walk around them in the halls, not always seeing them or their work as important. And whereas custodian appreciation day is celebrated every second of October each year, it recognizes the hard work it takes to keep our buildings in tip-top shape, as well as recognizes the people who diligently work to ensure we have workplaces that are spotless and sanitary. And whereas custodians contribute to the critical first impressions and the success of any business or organizations by delivering outstanding services and running well-maintained buildings. And whereas their skills save businesses and organizations money. Well-maintained carpets and services last longer. Seasonal updates and maintenance help buildings to run more efficiently, too. Custodial workers make sure buildings are ready for each season and running correctly. As a result, the buildings are safer and healthier for those entering them. And whereas the Pennington County buildings continually look organized and presentable because our custodians effectively keep everything in top-notch condition. Now, therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners of Pennington County, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2023, as National Custodian Appreciation Day. All citizens are encouraged to give recognition and show appreciation to all men and women who work as custodians in order to keep our workplaces running smoothly and in clean conditions. Signed this 19th day of September, 2023, at Pennington County, South Dakota, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Lastr. Dave, I'd like everybody to come down, take a picture of Dave, please.
Welcome, Dave. Thanks. You're the man of the hour, I guess. I'm going to feel a bit of Dave.
You just saw a Jane. Just saw you.
Years of service, but I want to -- do you guys want to make a comment to Buildings and Grounds first?
Make what?
A comment about -- I'm going to make one comment about Buildings and Grounds. I'll come back down and do the recognition.
We need to make a motion to agree with that.
Do you mean a motion will be approved?
Some hope.
Second.
Haddcock, seconded by Lastr. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I recognize Ms. Haddcock.
Did you know I was going to speak? You know, I'd like to thank all our coworkers that are custodians and keep our buildings nice. We appreciate you. Just went in a boiler or chiller room, I think it's boiler room, I don't know, Dave, you're going to have to tell me, basically, and did a tour a little bit ago and saw some of our custodians down there and working hard and keeping the place clean and getting it ready for some of the things that need maintenance as well, so they're not only cleaning their buildings on where you see them. Here, they go down in the different areas and clean up the dirt and some of the stuff that those areas that aren't so fun, so we appreciate them. Our buildings wouldn't be well-maintained without our Buildings and Grounds and our custodians, so we appreciate our coworkers and everything they do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And I'll also say, Dave and your crew, not only the custodians, but the Buildings and Grounds staff, when you say you're the first line, when the proclamation says you're the first line of defense and cleaning and so forth, but custodians are also the first line to see where there are problems, they see where there's leaks, they see where some problems to be and bring it to the attention of Buildings and Grounds. And so with that also, I think custodial staff is also a great starting point for a career in Pennington County. A lot of people have started there and have moved up into Buildings and Grounds and gone up into learning how to do more stuff, if that's what they choose to do, so you just can't speak enough about how much we appreciate your staff, custodial and Buildings and Grounds all together for keeping our facilities up to where they need to be. It saved the county lots of money, so. Is there any further comments? See none? Thank you, guys. Next, we'll go into Pennington County Employee Years of Recognition, and I will come down. Before I start doing that, is there any comments from the Commission? With that, I'll come down to the podium, and I'm not sure who's all here, but I'll start reading them off, and I'll give you your certificate, and then we'd like you to stay up here so we can have a photo. These are for the 20- and 25-year service employees. These certificates recognize how much the county commissioners appreciate your hard work. 20 to 25 years of service for Pennington County is a long time, and that means you've made a career out of your position with the county, and we, as commissioners, really appreciate that. And if there's anything you need to help do your job better or move forward, we know you are the folks that we come to, to ask, what can we do better? And that's why we recognize you guys and support you so much, because we really need your input. With that, I will start off with Scott Guffey, for 25 years of dedication and service committed to the county.
You're here, but it's that long, seems longer. Kenny's got it.
Brooke Hega. Can you make it?
Just head up and come, yay!
And next, we go to our 20 years of service. Sandra Sorman. Boo-boo, Sandra. And Sandra worked in 911 and now works in HR department, so you've made a good career. 20 years, Ryan Hoop. Not yet. Oh, man, I'm going to destroy this name.
It's like you knew. It's like he knew.
It's Michael.
Watch that.
Watch it. I told you I was going to destroy that. Michael, 20 years, appreciate it. Next one's 20 years of service, and it's Lori Sargent. And Lori, you're working as a certified addiction counselor at the camp campus. Do you really appreciate it?
Thank you.
Pennington County Jail Lieutenant Kenneth Wilson, 20 years of service, Kenneth?
Oh.
I'm making all that noise. Next, we have Pennington County Jail Lieutenant Kathleen Houston, 20 years of service. You make our jails a better place, real.
Thank you, sir.
Kathleen.
Appreciate it.
Office manager, Danielle of County Jail, Danielle Welch. Did I pronounce that right? All right. Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
Next, we have Pennington County Sheriff's Office Senior Captain Courtney. I'm not going to translate last name. Rayburn. Yeah. Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys all for your services, as I said, and the Pennington County Commissioners back here really rely on you guys heavily for all the functions of our county and the information we need as commissioners to move forward. And the dedication from the jail staff all the way to the care campus, to the county, I mean, we need you guys and we appreciate you guys, so I just wanted to take the time out on behalf of the Commission to really thank you guys for your service and making a family environment. We appreciate that. Do you want to say something, or do you want to?
Just that it's nice to have such an awesome team when you have people with this dedication and this experience makes a huge difference for Pennington County. We need you folks, and we need you a lot. You make the difference for us, whether it be your team, your individual teams, or just Pennington County overall. It makes a huge difference, and you guys know that from your experience, what experience does with anything you do, so thank you for your service.
Picture, please. In front of the podium would be great. Together in front of the podium, if we could.
I have to squish it.
You guys going to help get it in there?
I'll stand on his toes. Thank you.
Next, on our agenda is the Pennington County Loss, Control, Safety, Achievement Awards on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the SDML Workers' Compensation Fund, and I will recognize Commissioner Gary Drews to present these awards.
So I think Joe Miller's hanging around here, too, and I asked Joe to come in the room, if he would. So these are honors that have been awarded.
And Dave.
Pardon me?
And Dave from Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah, Dave would come up. These are honors that were presented last week at our county convention in Sioux Falls, and unfortunately, Dave and Joe were not there, but I'm going to ask Dave Ecclestine from Buildings and Grounds to come up, and I'm going to ask Joe Miller to come up from Highway Department. These are gold awards that they've received for safety achievements, and this is safety achievement for our employees. So injuries on the job are not a good thing. They've gone above and beyond in trying to protect our employees in their departments, as well as many other departments within Pennington County have done that. But for 22 years now, each of these departments have received the gold award, and both of them did receive a platinum award at one point last year, too, so which is great, that's the highest that you can receive, but gold is super. So we appreciate you taking the time to make sure that our safety, our employees are safe in the working conditions that they have, so if I can ask Dave and Joe to come up here, I'd like to present these to you. On the back, I think, on the back of the Buildings and Grounds, you get your plaque. Did you already receive yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because I was at the conference.
You was at the conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drews, and thank you to Buildings and Grounds and Highway for all your hard work and dedication to working safely. Is there any further comments? See none? We will move on to the consent agenda. Just before we do that, Holly, I'll just make -- no, you -- I just want to make the comment that we had a cancellation of one of our presentations that we may be moving on, so we may have extra time. So when we do have that, we will probably move on to, once we get through items one through 19, we'll ask a motion from the Board to take up items 21 through 24, because Planning Department needs to start at 10:30, so we may have some time, so I'm just letting you guys know that we may have to move some items up. With that, I would introduce Holly Hennings, the Commission Manager.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda with the request of a Board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 5th, 2023. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of September 6th, 2023. Number 10 is to declare the items on the list presented, plus any last-minute items of surplus, for the purpose of being auctioned online, to authorize Buildings and Grounds to solicit quotes and sign an agreement for auctioneer services, and to authorize advertisement of the surplus sale. And number 11 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of August, 2023.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove items from the consent agenda? See none? This time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion? See none? I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Lastr. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, this brings us up to item 12, items from the sheriff, and I'll recognize Sheriff Brian Mueller.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, and I'm back in front of you, as promised from the last meeting, to continue on with this process that you've all graciously allowed us to take on with our 2% increases for corrections and law enforcement and moving our detox supervisors, detox techs, ones, twos, and EMTs to an appropriate place on the pay scale where they get approximately $2.10 an hour raise. I've outlined the requested motions in the letter to you today, and then I will need to come back in front of you one more time to finish this process at the next meeting in the executive session. On the detox tech moves, we have approximately 20 employees that, per county policy, the 10% didn't get them to the $2.10 we were trying to, so we'll organize those and bring those back to you in the executive session to get those last few people moved, but this has been a long process. We've all learned a lot. I really appreciate the extra work of our accountants, our HR, and the Pennington County HR and the Auditor's Office to help us work together to come up with the right motions to be able to make this happen, so thank you. And then I know Commissioner Haddcock did ask for the overall costs and the list of individual employees as to where they currently are, where they're going to move. I do have that. I didn't make a bunch of extra copies, but I can get that to Holly for any of you that want copies of that. It's the information that I presented earlier on with the overall cost of these moves, and then I do have the list of each one of our individual employees, where they currently are, where they're moving to, and if you're okay with that, I'll give it to Holly and anybody that wants copies, she could make copies for.
Thank you, Brian. Ms. Haddcock.
So, bottom line, Brian, tell the public, because it is public information, why we're doing this, why we needed to do this. The reasoning behind it was a plus for Pennington County. It was a plus for our sheriff's office, but just the reasoning behind some of this because of some of the things that we need to do moving forward in order to maintain staff and basically staffing the areas that you're talking about.
Correct, thank you. And, you know, as you know, the county is going through a wage analysis study process to bring something back in front of the Commission next year for the 2025 budget for all employees, but as we were going through that process, we had some specific issues that we've been lagging behind on with some recruitment-retention issues, and specifically, law enforcement was close to $3 behind, an hour behind, our biggest competitors. This 2% mid-year raise, coupled together with the 4% COL and the 1.25% step that we're doing in January, will get us much closer to where we need to be on the law enforcement side. And then in corrections, you know, we were a little bit behind in that, but we've been running close to 30 correction positions short this last year. We're paying close to $1 million in overtime, and, you know, I brought the idea forward to try to get this, get a little bit of extra money to our staff, to hopefully retain some of them and be able to give us a little bit different tool on the recruitment side. It's had some impact. We've started to advertise that already. And then on the detox tech side, detox tech and detox supervisors, when you look at medical technicians across the community, almost all of those positions are starting at a minimum of $20 an hour, and our tech staff are starting at just a little over $17 an hour, so this mid-year adjustment, increasing them up approximately $2.10 on the scale, will get them to a competitive wage, and we had several employees that were expressing an interest in moving on just because our wage was so far behind that have stayed on with us, so I know it's having an immediate impact now and it's going to continue to impact our recruitment and retention into the future.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. My comment is, you know, I appreciate you bringing this forward to the Commission and taking some action on it, because I think a lot of times we don't see, you know, we talk about the wages, but the amount of work and required training for your staff to be where they are today, I mean, when you talk about detox staff, you're talking getting EMT training to paramedics, to training on the med, along with behavioral training and so forth and counseling, and I think you guys do a very good job, as we just seen with the 20 years and 25 years of service of being able to create a career path in the sheriff's department, whether it's starting out at detox and moving up to correctional or something along those lines, you guys have a path, and when you welcome, when you bring on new sheriff, new employees, you do a welcoming, I think that's important, and I think you guys have done a really exceptional job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yep, we truly do have a great staff, and I appreciate it every day that those that are working for us stay and that we continue to recruit, and it's exciting to see our new recruit classes come on, and I can tell you, over the last several months, each one of those classes has contained, you know, 20-year-plus employees who have retired that have come back to work for us, and family and friends of current employees, and I think that that's a good, healthy sign that your organization's doing things right when family and friends are recruiting their loved ones to come and work in the organization.
Very well. Any further comments from the Commission? If not, I would look for a motion. It's a pretty long one.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
We need the first motion, too, do we not?
Yes.
I would move to place detox supervisors to the step where they receive at least $2.10 increase on their current wage scale in DBM effective September 17th, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Haddcock. Is there any public comment? Any further comments from the Commission? See none? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
For taking care of your staff, Brian.
It's greatly appreciated, thank you.
Next, that brings us up to items from the treasurer, Net Brandt, and this is more good work that's happened from our sheriff's department.
Correct.
And you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Net Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer. Before you, you have the list of the uncollectible mobile home warrants, and truthfully, yes, we appreciate the sheriff's work on all of this, the Civil Department, headed by Sergeant Ed Schutz, and his team did a great job. We turned over 446 mobile home distress warrants, only two received 12 back, so before you are all the distress warrants that we would be seeking you to deem uncollectible and the reasons why, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Net?
Net, give me that number again, how many?
We turned over 446 as of March 2nd.
Okay.
And by statute, the sheriff has six months to work those, so they turned back over 12 on September 1. They do an excellent job over there for Pennington County.
They do. Any further discussion or questions? This one's a pretty long motion, too, that has to be read out for the record.
Mr. Chair.
Travis can.
Mr. Lastr.
I'd move to declare the mobile home taxes as uncollectible in the amount of $3,145.75 for the 2022 uncollected distress warrants as follows. DW902022, Richard Curry. DW1002022, Randy or Rhonda Diedrich. DW1732022, Kenneth or Cheryl Hitchu. DW2162022, Danny Krebs. DW2332022, Melvin Louie?
Louie.
Huh?
Louie.
DW2702022, Mitch Morris. DW3372022, Lorraine Roberts. DW3392022, Barbara Rolfes. DW3462022, Chance Rickman. DW3482022, and DW3492022, S&amp;S Rentals. DW4302022, Wallace Wells or Cheryl Jennings. of law enforcement deputy one, law enforcement deputy two, law enforcement sergeant, law enforcement lieutenant, law enforcement captain, correctional officer one, correctional officer two, correctional sergeant, correctional lieutenant, correctional captain, JSC commander, jail commander, and chief deputy positions effective September 17, 2023.
Thank you.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Comments?
No, thank you.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
For taking care of your staff, Brian.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to items from the treasurer, Net Brandt. And this is more good work that's happened from our sheriff's department.
Correct.
And you.
Good morning, commissioners. Net Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer. Before you, you have the list of the uncollectible mobile home warrants. And truthfully, yes, we appreciate the sheriff's work on all of this. The civil department, headed by Sergeant Ed Schultz and his team did a great job. We turned over 446 mobile home distress warrants, only two received 12 back. So, before you are all the distress warrants that we would be seeking you to deem uncollectible and the reasons why. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is there any questions for Net?
Net, give me that number again. How many?
We turned over 446 as of March 2.
Okay.
And by statute, the sheriff has six months to work those. So, they turned back over 12 on September 1. They do an excellent job over there for Pennington County.
They do. Any further discussion or questions? This one's a pretty long motion too, that has to be read out for the record.
Mr. Chair.
Travis can.
Mr. Laster.
I'd move to declare the mobile home taxes as uncollectible in the amount of $3,145.75 for the 2022 uncollected distress warrants as follows. DW902022, Richard Curry. DW1002022, Randy or Rhonda Diedrich. DW1732022, Kenneth or Cheryl Hichu. DW2162022, Danny Krebs. DW2332022, Melvin Louie? Huh?
Louie.
Louie. DW2702022, Mitch Morris. DW3372022, Lorraine Roberts. DW3392022, Barbara Rolfes. DW3462022, Chance Rickman. DW3482022 and DW3492022, S&amp;S Rentals. DW4302022, Wallace Wells or Cheryl Jennings.
Motion? It's been a motion seconded by Mr. Drews. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And again, thanks again to Sergeant Ed Schultz and his team. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks. Next on our agenda is the items from buildings and grounds. And we do have Senior Project Manager Kevin Burton on Zoom and he's going to go talk a little bit about the recommendation of TSP Design Service Control for the Concourse Drive Administration Offices. This is just a first hearing and reading of the presentation of that. And then after that, we have item B, the project status update. And that one will be looking to continue to October 3rd. So, I think the third one, but.
The third or fifth, probably. Third.
So, with that, I will recognize Kevin Burton. He is on his phone. Kevin, item number 14, which is the recommendation of TSP Design Service Contract for Concourse Drive.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm going through TSP right now, so I'll make this incredibly short. Recommendation, the value was $487,000 for continuing design services on the 900 Concourse Building. It is 8.4% of estimated construction cost, which is well within the range of typical design fees. I'll stand for any questions.
Chairman.
Ms. Hadcock.
Kevin, I appreciated your time yesterday. Me and Travis went through some of this and some of the building stuff. Appreciate your time, made sense. I'm in agreement with this. I mean, it's something that has to be done and it's something that you did well on. Could have well cost us a lot more money, Kevin, so thank you for your time on that.
Okay.
Your thing.
Then we have any questions since he's going through security. He's on phone. No further questions, Kevin. Get through security.
Thank you.
Be arrested.
Okay. And this is in, this is on the agenda in his report, brief report of what TSP Design Services all entails. And this is just the first hearing. We'll be bringing it up again October 3rd along with the presentation. So, with that, there's no action on this. I will move to item B, which is the presentation. I would look for a motion to continue that to October 3rd.
So, moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Hadcock, seconded by Laster to continue the building project status update to October 3rd. Any public comment? Any further from the commission? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to items from emergency management. I'll recognize Dustin Willet.
Good morning, Chairman LaCroy, members of the commission. Dustin Willet, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Item A is a reattack from what I presented before you at the last commission meeting. I was seeking a signature from the board on our updated, at that time, Local Emergency Operations Plan, LEOP. I, when Holly went through the signatures and realized it was in the form of a resolution, we needed to bring that back before you in a different format at this meeting in order to secure the signature on that resolution, not just a signature on a signature page. So, everything I said at the last meeting still applies. I did mention at the last meeting that we were going to be changing that name from the Local Emergency Operations Plan to the Local Disaster Operations Plan. I took this opportunity to go ahead and make that change as well. So, again, as a recap, some updated decedent storage numbers for our mortuary services in and around Pennington County that support our Mass Fatality Plan. And then that name change of the plan were the changes that were included in this, in this most current iteration of the Local Disaster Operations Plan. So, I believe the motion in front of you is to affix your signature to the resolution to adopt that plan as our current plan.
Yes, Justin. This is the resolution adoption of the 2023 Local Disaster Response Plan, formerly the Local Emergency Plan, Operations Plan. So, any questions for Dustin?
No, thank you, Dustin.
Any public comment? See none, I go to the board for motion.
So, moved.
Moved by Hadcock to, and seconded by Laster to approve the resolution adoption of the 2023 Local Disaster Response Plan. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to take just a quick moment of privilege and thank Holly and her staff for guiding us through these processes that we don't always have on the agenda. So, it's good to have someone that's a matter expert that can steer us correct. So, going on to item B, one of our emergency management vehicles sustained some significant damage in a hailstorm in July. We went through the normal insurance adjustment process and insurance came back and totaled that vehicle out. So, before you is a request to replace that vehicle or place an order for a 2024 SUV to replace that destroyed vehicle. And then next year, upon delivery of that vehicle, I'll come back before with a request to surplus the current one and put it in the county auction.
Is there any questions for Dustin on this? Ms. Hadcock? It looked like you wanted to speak, so.
Well, I said, "Thank you," John. I always look like I'm speaking. I won't go there.
Is there any questions? Any public comment? See none, I would look for a motion.
I'd move to authorize emergency management to purchase 2024 Dodge Durango from Liberty Chrysler LLC in Rapid City at the South Dakota State bid pricing of $45,424 for the purpose of replacing a vehicle destroyed by hail.
Second.
Moved by Gary Drews and seconded by Ms. Hadcock. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. That brings us up to item number 16, which is items from Compensation Committee. And I'll recognize HR Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. Item A is requesting approval of the new creation of Policy 4.17, which deals with separation benefits. And in our last meeting, what I had indicated is that the committee had pulled excerpts out of the vacation holidays and sick leave policies to make this standalone, to make sure that it was clarity as well as consistency in how that was handled. So, the motion could read as follows. That I move to approve the recommended creation of Policy 4.17, Separation Benefits, to define benefit time compensation for voluntary termination or retirement and have that effective September 19, 2023.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Hadcock and I heard seconded by Laster. Any questions? Any comments from the public? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have item B, which is the compensation philosophy.
Correct. That the Compensation Committee, that they put together the Pennington County Compensation Philosophy. And this is in the spirit of making sure that we have a fair, straightforward, and transparent as well as equitable compensation policy. So, the motion could read, "I move to approve the Pennington County Compensation Philosophy effective immediately."
Go move.
Moved by Drews.
Thank you.
Seconded by Laster. Any public comment? Any comment from the commission? The only thing I'd say is I like that philosophy and it's very well put together.
Thank you.
With that, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Next, we come up to item number 17. This is a letter of support and partnership commitment. The City of Box Elder and the U.S. Department of Transportation reconnecting communities and neighborhoods. As you guys can see on the agenda, this was brought forth from Box Elder for our support and it's, and we have had correspondence with Joe Miller, Highway Department, and he's in support of this as long as there's no funding involved. I think this is a good move. I think there was another one of these down a couple of years ago out around in the valley around the elementary school that the city had applied for. But I think this is, I checked with Highway. Joe, do you have any comments on this? Because we do have a hearing with 1416 tonight also.
Yes, there's a, excuse me, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. We have a public meeting on Highway 1416, Radar Hill Corridor Study tonight, 5:30 to last one until 7:30, 8 o'clock. Box Elder at the Liberty Center, not the Liberty Center, the City Hall there, I think.
Yeah.
Anyways, I talked to Rob Tim a little bit about this last week sometime. Essentially, this is trying to get, it's for pedestrian facilities. And I-90 is the main one, but then you also have 1416 and the railroad, which separates Box Elder, you know, kind of in, you got half of it above north of I-90 and half of it south of I-90. So, that's what this is geared towards is more pedestrian-type facilities and connecting the community as a whole through those barriers, so.
Chairman.
Ms. Hadcock.
So, basically busing services, meaning transportation-wise, or what are you talking?
I think it's more walking, biking, that sort of pedestrian facilities. I'm not sure on the busing. I.
I didn't know if it was part of the busing because we didn't do a study on that before, but.
Yeah, I think it's more like you said sidewalks, bicycles, getting that grant to try, yeah.
Yeah, doing the railroad with it, trying to do it down the railroad back in the day so people could go out like down 44 safe and other places like that. So, I understand. Thank you.
Is there any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
How does this merge with what we're already doing with that safety corridor study and any of the construction that would go on in there?
So, this is, would be, I mean, the corridor study is going to take into account the pedestrian facilities, but that's not its main focus.
Right, I get that.
Main focus is the vehicular travel. This is going to hopefully be in kind of conjunction with that, I would think. It's going to have to work together with that corridor study and anything else that's going on with the corridor as a whole when it's constructed, so.
I guess what my question is, is this talks about funding in 2025, and this is all for pedestrian work, but our corridor study, as far as I remember, it may take us even further out, but there is some pedestrian stuff that's proposed. It's not, you know, it's not proven yet, but, or approved yet, but it is proposed. How would that work if we, moving forward, they get the monies in September? Do you apply those to what we're doing with any of the construction for any of that pedestrian walk bridges and stuff that's being proposed if we say that that's what we're going to end up doing with the?
That would have to be a question for Box Elder. I would assume that this money, if they were granted this money or if they were awarded that grant money, it would have to be in conjunction with the design of the corridor study. So, they, this money would be for the pedestrian facilities if a walk bridge or a tunnel or whatever that might be to connect Box Elder. When they're doing the corridor study and then when, as we move into design, those two are going to have to marry up. You know, it'll probably be two separate designs, whereas Box Elder is paying for one, Pennington County, and Box Elder are paying for the actual corridor and the design of that one through safety dollars or whatever mechanism that is. It would definitely have to be kept separate, I would think.
Okay.
Any further questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the chair's signature on a letter of support and partnership commitment for the City of Box Elder's reconnecting communities and neighborhoods, Community Planning Grant Application.
Now, second. Is there any further discussion from public? Commission? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us to item 18, approval of the vouchers for $3,361,312.13. Look for, is there any public comment on that?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Hadcock, seconded by Laster to approve the vouchers. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is, we've hit that point in our agenda where we're ahead of schedule by about 45 minutes. So, I would look for the commission to take up items 21 through 24.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Are we, are we going to address 19? I know we don't see anybody out there, but just for the record, are we going to address number 19? So, it's on the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I marked that off right after that. First of all, we have item number 19, which is items from the public STCL 1-251. Speaker request form is required. And at this time, for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its functions. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. I do not have no speaker request forms. So, I wanted to read that in record. That's item number 19. Now, I'd go for a motion to take up items. Believe I had it written down.
23, 24.
No, I think.
Oh, 21.
Start with.
Oh, I'm sorry, 21.
21 through 24.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Drews to take up items 21, move up items 21 to 24, seconded by Laster. Any public comment? Any commissioners? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21 is 2023 Legislative Interim Study Committee on County Funding and Services Update, and this will be by Commissioner Gary Drews.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, certainly want Holly and Lloyd, who are both in attendance at this, to also chime in. But at the, during our county association annual meeting, the Legislative Study Committee held their fourth and final meeting relative to county funding. And they received testimony for three hours in the morning and then in the afternoon spent approximately three and a half, four hours, I believe, in order of going through all the information that they had collected over the four hearings that they've had during the course of the summer. Moved several bills forward that in concept with the intent being is that they will now try to work out all the numbers and the figures as to how this may, most of the impact would be on state government for these bills moving forward because there's no new taxes tied to any of these pieces of legislation. It's a matter of really shifting some of those costs over to state government. State government did have a $97 billion surplus at the end of this last year. And I think legislators and most of the discussion on these proposals talked about it being a fairness issue. And counties are really an extension of state government. When it was originally established as to what the responsibilities of state government would be, when they determined what those responsibilities would be, some of them they determined would be better served at the local level. And that's been the obligation of counties then. So, even like with our budget, about 90% of our budget is spent on mandated items of services to the public. And so, there's very little money in there for other things to consider with. So, some of the bills that were moved forward were, we seem to be, counties seem to be picking up more costs than what we believe and what this Legislative Study Committee believed was reasonable was, one was to allow the counties to impose administrative service fee for collecting and distributing property taxes. So, we have the responsibility to collect the property taxes for the school districts, the cities, and any other entity that's operating off property taxes, including the county. But all the cost is for that collection is borne by the county. Also, another item that was moved forward was to impose administrative fees on TIF districts. TIFs are something that are a timely process and most of that work is being done. TIFs are something that are a timely process, and most of that work is, is being done by our auditor's office. And so there needs to be some sort of a, again, a fairness issue of being able to reimburse for time and expenses relative to collection of, of the, or administration of the, of the TIF districts. Also, talked about the veteran service officers, offices. We have three veteran service officers that work in Pennington County, providing services to, I think, about thirteen thousand veterans. And so this committee felt that that may be, should be considered a state funded program rather than county funded. And so there is a bill that's already in the works by Senator David Johnson, local senator, and Barry Tice and Alex Purcell have been working with him, trying to get that language work that works best for us too. Emergency managers, again, they looked at that and just said, this maybe should be a state funded operation instead of the counties picking up that fee. One of our biggest expenses is court appointed attorney costs and legal defense costs. And so they're looking at potentially moving forward a bill which would create an upper limit on public defender costs, possibly maybe a ten thousand per case, and then the rest of it would be covered by the state. One of the better ones that I think also, especially for law enforcement jails, is the redistribution of the alcohol bill breach tax. Counties currently, counties currently receive only twenty-five percent of that. Excuse me. And the proposal is, is that the counties receive fifty percent instead of the twenty-five percent, and the state receives twenty-five percent instead of fifty percent. So we do know the cost of this. The cost to the state would be about four and a half million, and Senator Boland from Canton is carrying this bill. Mental health was a major discussion. Again, committee has firm belief that there needs to be some funding support for that effort. Some things relative to road districts and townships. Back in nineteen thirty-nine, there was a bill that was passed by the South Dakota Legislature which said if county has to go in and open up a township road because of winter conditions, the charge would be two hundred dollars per mile. Well, nineteen thirty-nine, that fee may have been realistic, but it isn't anymore. And so they're pushing that up to twenty-five hundred dollars per mile, and I'm not sure that's actually adequate to take care of the cost, but at least it's an improvement. Cyber security costs, again, they're, they're proposing that the state establish a grant program to assist local government entities, including counties, on that. Also, they said that the state's Obligation Recovery Center should be made available to counties to assist in collection of money owed to the county. I don't know exactly how this works, but could be a benefit to us too. There's several resolutions that go along with it. There's a joint resolution to encourage cooperation amongst counties on services with a grant program, incentive program essentially, create more cooperative efforts amongst counties for services. We have several of those things that we, we currently do with, with our J C, JSC. That's a seven county comp act that we have. We also have agreements with a couple of other counties in housing prisoners. I believe that's with Custer and Fall River County. And so some of those things are already an ongoing type thing, but they're trying to encourage all counties to look at that kind of an effort, cooperative effort. And then one of the other things that's being looked at is the state providing a centralized property tax database. And this has been switched to a resolution to support instead of a, a bill per se. A lot of, a lot of things that need to be worked through relative to that, making sure that whatever that database is, that fits the county's needs also. And I'd call on Holly or Lloyd to talk about any other things that they would like to add to this.
Holly?
I think Commissioner Drews covered it very well.
I, I'll second that. This is the first time I was at the study, Commission, Legislative Interim Study. I mean, I thought it was very interesting watching through it, and I appreciate Mr. Drew was one of the speakers and presenting as several others to that, to that board. And I could see there was some genuine intent from that board of the work that the counties that, you know, were restricted in. And I could see from that board, there was some genuine intent to help work, work through this and through some of the motions that came through and the communication, they made some of those motions to come forward and, but, you know, what was interesting was some of the board members on there with some of the history that they have with the legislatures. I'm trying to remember their appropriations committee, there was a guy that'd been on appropriations for many years, and his history being able to say, nope, that's not going to work, you know, try this. And then the board walked, worked through it and came up with some different motions and intentions to, to move forward. But I was able to come and go, we had other things going on, but I didn't stay till the end and I thank our, our representative, Helen, Helen Duhamel, for the work that she's done and, and some, some of our local people, Randy Dybert and, and also David Johnson, that also played a part of that board. And I just appreciate the dedication from our staff and county for working with them and through every step of this process. And I think you guys did a good job, and I appreciate it.
A lot of credit needs to go to Holly for putting together the, all the information for the presentation that she and I made a month ago at that committee meeting. And I think that was at a point in time where the, the Legislative Committee, which was made up of fourteen members, seven Senate members, seven House members. And at that point, and I think when we started that day, they'd asked that we hold our comments to five to seven minutes, and our presentation went a little longer than that. But with the questions that came afterwards, I think we were on the witness stand for about forty minutes for that, so. But I think they was able to glean a lot of information as to things that, how they work in Pennington County that they could apply to other counties also, not necessarily the dollar figures, but figuring out, oh, these are things that the, the counties have to do and are responsible for. So I think it was all good. I've been around the legislative process for many years, and this is really, in my opinion, the most successful study Legislative Committee that I've ever seen. A lot of that has to do with the chair and the vice chair.
Yeah.
With the way they was able to conduct the meetings and basically said right at the beginning, you know, we're not here just to come up with some discussion, we're here to come up with, try to come up with some solutions. And we want everybody to be on board as much as possible with these solutions that we come up with. So they, they really did a thumbs up, thumbs down on each one of these proposals. I don't think there's any proposal that moved forward with more than three negative votes or three thumbs down. Otherwise, most of them had unanimous or close to unanimous.
Yeah.
Support when they moved forward, so. Which gives me a good feeling that moving into the legislative session, and although there still has to be a lot of information fleshed out as far as what, what is the cost of each one of these various things? Because the only thing we really know is on that, on the alcohol tax, what that dollar amount is. Otherwise, there's more, more information that needs to be developed on that, on, on the rest of them. But I think that we have a good opportunity, best opportunity I've ever seen for counties to come through the legislative process with some real winners, I believe, in this.
I agree. And I think you had the presentation was on our agenda a couple of weeks ago at last meeting, and that was a very good presentation. And I think that committee learned a lot from that, and that's why the direction that they're in. Any questions from Mr. Drews or Holly or myself?
I was going to mention.
Go ahead.
Roger Chase, legislator, House of Representatives member out of the Huron area, is a former county commissioner. He was the chair of it, which helped considerably. Randy Dybert was the vice chair. He's also a county commissioner in Lawrence County and a state senator. He'll have to make a determination now this next year as to whether or not he runs for county commission again or runs for the state senate.
I'll have to admit, Roger did a good job chairing that. And it was kind of different how they did that. The panel stayed up on the board, and the chair and the vice chair came down, just like they represent on the dais, and that's how they ran that, which made sense that way. They could see everything that was going on. And that Roger, you know, he made several comments throughout the meeting. We, we want results. I remember one vote, I don't remember what it was on, it was like ten to one, and the, the discussion, he says, last chance, anytime change event, you know, we want a unanimous on this, try as much as possible, and that person changed their vote to make it unanimous. So he gave him a second chance, you know, after the, some of the discussions. But he did a very good job chairing that meeting. If there's nothing else, we will move on to item number twenty-two, which is items from the chair or commission members. This is a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the board for future consideration. Is there anything from the commission that they'd like to discuss? Saying none, I'll go to item number twenty-three, which is meetings and committee reports for commissioners, and I'll start with Mr. Laster.
Planning commission went well. There was a, probably just one major that I can remember that was a, a split vote. There was only six of us there. It was a split vote, we were waiting for one of the members to show up, they never did. We tabled it, there was some discussion between staff and the individual. And after some more discussion, after we brought it back on, there was a slight adjustment made to the very, the variance, and then it passed. So it was good to see that, you know, even though it was a split vote, we had some conversation, conversation with the landowner and see what they were willing to do. There was still a variance that was required, just not as large of a variance, and so I think it worked out. Outside of that, nothing crazy from that meeting.
Thanks, Travis. Mr. Drews.
Well, the first one I had to report on is the building committee, but I'm going to keep that short because we know that Kevin's going to come and give us a full report at our next meeting. But at our building committee meeting, most of the discussion at this meeting really was the layout, and I think all of you have received now a copy of the layout of the concourse building. They continue to work with the various departments that are going to be located there and trying to adjust and make sure that the space is adequate and usable for each of the departments. They've made a, I think they switched the treasures department with one of the other departments now to make it more accessible and so forth, so. And then also talked about the building of fourteen St. Joseph, where buildings and grounds is going to be moving into, and the intent is they have public defender's office in there also. They continue to work, they're about, I think it was ninety days that they had in order to try to work through details and look at the building and see if there's any issues with it and so forth. And I think they're about through that stage now, but they continue to work with the, with the owner to, because they want to, they want to continue to have access to that building for a period of time. And so it's a matter of making sure that, you know, getting in and out of the building works for both the county and for, and for their operation. So dollar and cent wise, I think Kevin will present all those numbers at the, at the next meeting. And then the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Annual Convention was very well attended in Sioux Falls. I think that we came out of there with some, with some pretty good things for Pennington County. Our chair was elected as the representative for W I R, which is good, he takes over from Randy Dybert, who served in that capacity the last couple of years. Randy's done a good job, but Lloyd has been very active with that during that period of time also. In fact, Lloyd is the one that reached out and convinced them to hold their twenty twenty-five convention in Rapid City. And so we're looking forward to that because I don't remember exactly how many people that brings in, but.
It's quite a few.
Yeah.
Up to, I think, up to two thousand, am I overstating that, Holly?
I don't think you are. I think it's two thousand, twenty-two hundred or something like that. And because of our location, I, I suspect we might even get a better turnout than that. So that's great. I mean, to have them come and basically be in, in our home area and see the issues that, that we deal with, with Forest Service, et cetera. So I'm pleased that Lloyd is, is going to be that representative for that, so. Other than that, there was some very good seminars during the convention. I think that, and I'm going to let Lloyd talk on it, but I think one of the, one of the main ones that I really thought was great was what some of the county's school districts have done relative to moving forward with a financial, look at their finances and whether or not they're utilizing and taking advantage of what they have and not, not wasting money and so forth, so, which I thought, I thought was an excellent program. And other than that, I guess I was also elected as the state president for the South Dakota County Association too, so I'm looking forward to that for this next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Kerry. Ms. Deb?
Yes, first off, Central State Fair Board had the best team ever. Their board actually was very active in helping with the fair, not just being on a board and putting their name down as a board member. I thought that was pretty awesome. We had a very good team leader, which is Jerry Cope. He kept everybody aboard. We had team meetings three times that week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, made a huge difference. Any problems came up, everybody had their phones, everybody's willing to step forward and get things done and help the staff and the volunteers at the fairgrounds. It was an amazing team effort. Liked watching it, liked listening or just following my phone with all the people talking and what needed to be done. And the minute it came on, five minutes later, it seemed like someone was just over there doing what they were supposed to do to help. So like I said, it's nice to see board members that you see that are very active, not just another board to put their name on. Sometimes I feel like that when people are, you know, signing up. You got to be active, you got to be part of the solution when you join boards, and this team is with Jerry Cope's being our chair. We had some issues with weapons policy. Travis Laster is supposed to meet with Jerry Cope this week, if I'm correct. Jerry said he'd give Travis a call. Travis is very knowledgeable about weapons policies and things that we need help with on the fairgrounds to make sure we are following policy and procedure accordingly with that. Appreciate Travis's time. Travis went to peer for a lot of that, so I think if there's going to be a solution, I'll be with Travis and, and our chairman, who's very awesome, Jerry Cope. There was a lot of huge events this year with the concerts. I'll just tell you, the concerts were the biggest they ever been. They had an amazing fair. Couple like quirks as we, we figured out and we need to change some of that policy. We do it at the county all the time. If something doesn't work or something's not quite what it should be, we go back and find a better solution and work it out. So I appreciate all the time that people have put on the fair this year. A lot of volunteers, thank the volunteers, they're always amazing. The group, the new group that the fair Ron has for a team is some women and men, a lot of women, that are doing some multitasking on, on many different areas and just, how do you, just kicked it, just amazing job. I mean, went above and beyond again, and then, like I said, a lot of them have that experience, that knowledge, and then they have others helping them that have. that knowledge, and then they have others helping them that have. I loved it this year. I mean, I always do, but it was pretty amazing just to see people group together. For the fire service board, we are doing the bylaws. We're updating those. Jay knows that. He's helped us. Thank you Jay. Some of those go a long ways and other things. There's a lot of questions and I always like questions to things. So we are still working on that. Thank you Val and Jerome, getting those things done for the fire service board. They also had, which was nice, they gave me some cards, fruit and cake. They're always very nice to me and they're a great team of people to work with as well. A lot of passion in the fire service board. So you already know it's a great team to work with as well. We are also inviting everyone to the gala. The commissioners, if they'd like to come October 14th, it is at the fairgrounds. That should be a very nice event. I'm helping Val with that. And then we have, all I know is Caleb's girlfriend, and I apologize her name, but she's working on the videos and stuff. So I apologize. I can't remember her name. But she's doing an amazing job with Val to get some of that ready. Care Campus is always near and dear to, to my heart with everything they do with Brian doing his updates for work release and some other things that he is doing. Not quite out yet. So he'll give us updates on that later. Barry, the pivot point project, the pivot point project that we moved forward on, BMS, doing well, mostly staffing. We already know. Deb Jensen came from Mount Rushmore Road. She was impressed by our group and the knowledge they had with Jim Hansen as well. So that team is always good at trying to solve problems or move forward. Barry and Sheriff are doing amazing jobs at finding solutions and moving things in areas that we're having problems, like we just talked about. If you have problems over, over areas that you need to improve on. Brian, or I should say Sheriff Mueller, I keep calling Brian. Sheriff Mueller with the team we have over there are doing an amazing job to work together. Communication is everything. Also went for a tour of some of our buildings. I'll keep doing some of that. We have some old cast iron pipe that's causing us some major issues. Three breaks last, or two breaks there last week. And then the new building over at the concourse, that had a big water line break. They're still working on that. So yeah, and I like to look at that kind of stuff. I went to the Quonset building to see the big water line break there. And then they have two floors on that Quonset building, not just one. And trying to dig through that was majorly an issue. Happened to know one of the kids, I call them kids, probably 40, Jesse was in the trenches digging out the pipe and stuff for putting in mains for the new, or for the courthouse. Huge project. And they have that iron, basically you have red dirt with cast iron pipe, which the iron you already know from the red dirt starts rotting the piping. So they've had major, major issues with that. Why? They still can't figure out why anybody would put the red dirt next to iron pipe. But at the time, probably didn't think about it. Meaning you don't know how, what dirt or anything does to it till 10 or 20 years later. So no fault for anybody's. Also went to Travis's Black Hills Pregnancy Center Gala was amazing. Had a good speaker, Mr. Archer. Sounds like he did well on his fundraising, but he should. Basically, it was experiences of this man about, you know, having a mother and, and those things. And basically a success story from tragedy. And I always like hearing those stories. So that was, I really liked that. Thank you for inviting me Travis. But it was, it was good. It was something that a lot of people, they see and go to things that have to do with what babies do and how to save babies, basically, and what Travis and people do to do that. It's pretty cool. So anyway, those are my updates.
Thanks Commissioner. Mine, well, first of all, congratulate Gary Drew as being elected new president of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
He did a good welcome and exit for, his name's skipping, the past president.
Oh, Dean Karski.
Dean Karski. Dean Karski was on it for about 18 months. I remember him saying so. So welcome. I think we're going to move forward. I want to thank everybody who showed up. I mean, we had Pennington County was very well represented, represented out there with, we had Carol Holly, we had Annette, we had Cindy, plus some of their staff. So, because it was combined convention with South Dakota Association of County Commissioners and South Dakota Association of County officials. So it was a good turnout. And I know Cindy had presented at one of the sessions. I'm going to have to refer back to probably Carolyn Holly on that class, that, the name of what they did. Was it called FIRM that the school board did and that Mini Haha did and?
FAN, Financial Action Network.
Exactly. That was one of the classes was probably one of the most haha moments because we had a lot of county officials in that, that meeting. And, and what, when they talked about the FAN, the Financial Analyst, endless.
Financial Action.
Action. Mini Haha, well, it first came out with the school board. The school board, what they did was they invited the community members to come into the school board's finances. I mean, they, I think they said they got anywhere from five to 10 people that come in, financial experts in the community, volunteers. They weren't paid. The only thing they got was lunch, but to analyze their books for the school district to see where they were at financially. And then they came back with recommendations of what to do and, and some of it had been, they had to opt out. But they did find some savings. They incorporated them. But the biggest thing was getting the community involvement in the financial part of what the school system was doing. Well, that worked out so well that Mini Haha County tried the same thing. They incorporated the same thing. Got people from the public to come in, analyze their books, see where they're at, give them forecasts, see where they could save money. And, and that's what, that's all about the FAN is, it's creating trust in your community of what your books look like. And, and from a community standpoint. And so they also, after Mini Haha did it, then Jim Schmidt got up and he talked about how Lincoln County joined up and they did the same thing. One of the other things that I think that really impressed me was, you know, you're getting the public input on, on that type of thing. And I haven't had the chance to sit down with Holly, Gary, or even Cindy, because Cindy was in the class also, to see where they're at with this. But you know, you have to have willingness from the auditor to be able to do something like this in order to create the trust of the public and so forth. But I think it's a good way forward. But they also talked about a county administrator, you know, I think Jim talked about that mostly, and I think that's something to consider. But I think we're in the early stages to get some of the commission information on that, where this would go. I think I'd, I'd look to create a team between three or four of us to look and analyze what this could look like for our county, if we could move forward or not. And so I'm just bringing it up now as, to put it on your radar that something may come forward in a future date. And we'll keep everybody informed as far as that goes. That was the, the haha moment of that, along with the summer study. With that, I will move on to the time cancel placement. We did do that last week. And thanks Holly for, and the staff and Dave for all the work that they've done to get the time cancel up and going. It was a good sized event. We had a lot of, of our, our county family members there, is what I call them. And they were there to watch it and it went off very well. It'll be interesting to see. Well, we're not going to be around when it gets opened up 100 years from now. But I'm sure with the way buildings and grounds run this building, well, the building will still be here by then. So that was a good event. Also, the air quality board was canceled. They're kind of reconfiguring. We're still short a county official. We're working on, does it have to be, we haven't been able to get any volunteers on it. Can't be an employee. We had, we're having those discussions. Brittany, Jason, myself met with Vicki and their official a couple of weeks ago. And what their main discussion was, was on some ordinances with stormwater ordinances and some other stuff. And Brittany and Jason were very well open to the discussions and they'll probably bring something to, back to the board or with them after that. I think that's pretty much all I've got to report on. Does anybody else have any final reports that they forgot? Seeing none. I'm going to go on to item number 24, was it, which is executive session. I'm going to try something a little bit different here. Jay, you're here, so keep me on track.
You have a Jake.
This is executive session SDCL 1-25-2, personnel issue per SDCL 1-25-21. Normally we go into executive session to talk about some of the stuff on personnel issues. But the information that was provided in our pack gives you all the commissioners an opportunity to review the information on the personnel issues and seek any questions out over the weekend that they, they felt that they needed. So I feel that we don't really need an executive session unless a commissioner has questions to the specific department head, our HR or so forth on this item. So with that being said, I don't think there is one unless there is discussion. So I'll ask commissioners, does any commissioner have any questions of the department head or HR concerning this personnel issue?
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
It does have her name on here. And Chris has been our accountant before and she's amazing in what she does. So then to retain her, so people know, that's why there's not a lot of discussion probably too. She's done an amazing job for the highway department and very dedicated. Now they need her part-time and that's a given for me. She's just worth every penny we give her. So.
Okay. So I'm, I'm taking, there's no, no other questions from the commission. Jay, am I okay to move forward with this, with the motion?
You are because the.
Okay.
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to grant an exception to the new hire policy and start Christine Grable as part-time non-benefited at 3530 an hour effective October 30, 2023.
Moved by Gary Drews, seconded by Commissioner Hagcock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I just simply want to say this is, this is a great benefit to the county with a long-term employee that's willing to come back and do training on a part-time basis force. And so I don't think there's any doubt that this was a great move.
Thank you. Any further discuss, public comment? Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate percent. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our planning doesn't start until 10:30. I'd look for a motion to take a break till 10:30.
So moved.
Moved by.
Second.
Laster, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate percent.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're coming back from break and now comes to the time for the planning items. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on any item, please complete speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return question manager Holly Hitties located the lower right side of the dais. With that, I'll recognize Brittany.
Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item A is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review PU 19-01 for Brink Constructors, Inc., BCI Properties LLC and Zane Brink as the agent, is to review an apprenticeship training facility for linemen of Brink construction and a plan unit development. And the planning commission recommended to continue the review of Plan Unit Development Overlay PU 19-01 to the October 30, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Sorry Joe.
Okay. I take it nobody wants to remove the consent agenda, the one, one item. So it's been moved to continue for the nine, 10, 3, 23, 23 meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate percent. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Contested here is Jason.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item B is Plan Unit Development Overlay 23-06 to allow recreational resort. Applicant is Horse Creek LLC. The agent is Garrett Kuchenbecker. If you guys recall, we did have this on the agenda for you on August 22nd, and it was continued to this meeting. We have made contact with the applicant. He is continuing to work with Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, the septic system sized appropriately. They came back and said that it wasn't. So he's been in contact with an end stammer. They've went out and did the profile holes. They're in discussions of expanding those drain fields out there to bring them up to spec. So with that, staff would recommend to continue Plan Unit Development Overlay 23-06 to the October 10th, 2023, or sorry, the October 17th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate percent. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item C and D both pertain to the same property. I don't know if you'd like to discuss those together.
Would we like to suspend the rules and discuss items C and D both at the same time, but then vote separately?
Motion to suspend the rules on item C and D.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Mr. Drews. All in favor indicate, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Agenda item C is comprehensive plan amendment 23-08 to change future land use from highway service district to rural residential district. And agenda item D is to rezone 23 dash, or rezone 23-11 to rezone 3.11 acres from highway service district to rural residential district. The applicants are Blake and Allison Thompson. Location of the property is 23807 South Rockerville Road. It is 3.11 acres. Currently zoned highway service district. Existing land use is residential. Access is off South Rockerville Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff does look at current and proposed zoning designations in the area. They're on the screen, just as a comparison. Staff also does review zoning within a half mile of the property. You can see those current zoning designations on the screen. We do the same for future land use. They're also on the screen. Staff does also look at infrastructure. There is private waste, private water and private onsite wastewater treatment systems on the property. South Rockerville Road is a 73 foot wide right of way. 20 feet of that is paved. Staff's, we did route this out for interdepartmental review. County Highway noted that there is a missing approach permit on file there. That's something the staff will work with the applicant to square away. No other objections or concerns were received. A little history on the property. You see these two lots to the south, they were all three platted off along with the subject property back in, I believe, 2013, 2014. At that time, these two southernmost lots were rezoned to rural residential, leaving this as highway service. I think the applicant at that time proposed to make a recreational resort on that property. So they wanted to keep it highway service district. The subsequent landowners who recently purchased the property went to refinance at the bank, couldn't get a refinance because of his own highway service district. So that's the reason for the request today. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone 23-11 and comprehensive plan amendment 23-08.
Of approval.
Second.
So we have a motion on item C, which is to move the approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment C eight twenty-three oh eight. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now for item D, would probably be the motion to move to a re, approve, rezone RZ twenty-three dash eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the end of our agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Seconded by Drews to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jason.